You lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Sure. Let's take just a moment of silence to recognize our past president Jimmy Carter, and then I'll start the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Atkinson. We do have, we had all of our city council members here, and one needed to go home. And I don't believe we got them on the line, so we do need a motion to excuse Councilmember Cuevas.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Cuevas.
Second? It's a motion to excuse Councilmember Cuevas by Councilmember Euer and second by Councilmember Atkinson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. This time, we're going to do citizen comments. It's a period of opportunity for anybody in the public to come up to state your name and address, and we'll limit to three minutes, and there is no public hearing. So who do we have first? Good to address us. Come on up, sir.
Okay, Alan Specht, 820 Cascade. Every year, you guys send us a thing to make sure our shrubs are trimmed back, which is great, thank you. Describes a clearview triangle, which is 25 by 25 on the corner. I live on Cascade Street, and turning onto Ferry Street, which is a quite busy street, is difficult when you're turning left. They do not have the 25-foot clearview triangle. There's approximately six, seven-foot fence, there's trees and bushes. For the first few years I lived here, I trimmed them myself and just left the bushes there, just so I could see, because they were into the sidewalk. I stopped doing that, started making complaints to you guys, and which is great, thank you for the ability. But it's closed immediately with a referral to code enforcement, which is great, it's getting referred. But I never hear back from them. I don't know if my complaint is valid, I don't know if I misunderstand the 25-foot rule, I don't know if you guys are working on it, or, but it would be really cool if I could see going left off of Ferry, off of Cascade, turning on the Ferry. That's it, thank you.
We got your name, and we got your address, right? So we will reach out to code enforcement, and somebody will be contacting you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yep, thank you, sir. Who else do we have? Anybody else?
Hi, Happy New Year. This might be three minutes and 30 seconds, so Marty's here with me, just in case. Hi, my name is Denise McBreeney. As you know, my son Travis Coleman went missing and still hasn't been found. It is pretty common knowledge at this point that Wenatchee PD policies and procedures weren't followed in Travis's case. Today, I'm here to share one of the things that we have been able to accomplish in the past year since Detective Hewitt came on the case nine months in. Over time, I shared my experience and concerns with him and told him some of the things that I would like to see happen to help Wenatchee PD respond appropriately, to help ensure that this would never happen again to other families. Going through, other families going through a similar tragedy. After several meetings and so much work by Hewitt, he developed this questionnaire. And I think you have it, right?
We do, yes.
Okay, so a two-page questionnaire. And I am here to recognize his amazingness and thank him from the bottom of my heart for working with me. It's an ongoing process, making big changes, and there's more to come. I am so grateful that he is receptive and then launches into action like a superstar. It's so refreshing to work with people who want to communicate and make changes for the greater good of humanity. Everyone who goes missing is a child of someone. Their worth is priceless, and every family should be treated with respect and dignity. This missing person questionnaire is a tool to help law enforcement follow the steps to ensure that they're following their standard operating procedures when they receive a missing person report. It has now been linked to the Wenatchee PD policy manual, and Hewitt has trained each officer in the department on how to use it. I would go into how each section reflects the policy numbers, but I don't have time. The first part of the questionnaire is information gathering, followed by locations checked and evidence collected, which will help ensure that the scene is documented efficiently, isn't contaminated, and evidence is not lost. Then comes the search urgency chart, which is super important. It's a scoring matrix to help identify the response required. The categories are age, medical condition, number of subjects, subject experience, weather, equipment profile, terrain, and hazardous profile. Each profile is scored at a one, two, or three.
Okay, well, I know you have something else here, so we'll give you just another minute. That's great.
Thank you.
Like you asked for.
Thank you. Each profile is scored at a one, two, or three. An eight to 11 is an emergency response, a 12 to 16 is a measured response, and a 17 to 21 is evaluate and investigate. In addition, it is noted that a one in any category could lead to or require an emergency response. Travis had more than one, and his score fell into the emergency response range. There also, there's also a section for categorizing missing persons, which includes endangered and suspicious, both which Travis would have been listed under. Then there's the response plan, which includes the officers and supervisors' duties checklist, so they all will have the same measured and documented response to every case. Huge accomplishment, because no one will be turned away, services won't be denied, and the family will not be forced to perform these tasks during a tragedy like we did. I want to recognize and stand my gratitude to our amazing community members and agencies for helping us in so many ways, and the support and prayers that come in from across the nation and worldwide. It has been mind-blowing, and you all have kept my heart shining. Thanks, Team Heart, I love you so much. God bless you all. Thank you.
And I know our chief's here, and he'll pass on the positive comments.
Okay, and there's so much more to come, and Sergeant Eaton's now the supervisor over the detective unit, and we're going to make big changes. Thanks.
Okay, who else in the audience would like to address the city council for three minutes? Seeing none, we'll go on to our consent items.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve agenda vouchers of minutes from previous meetings, a resolution, and a motion for resolution number 2025-01, appointing Jamie Goodman as a member of the Wenatchee Arts and Recreation and Parks Commission, final contract voucher for Matt House Street Improvements Project, City Project Number 1916. And final contract voucher for 2024 Sidewalk Panel Repair Project, City Project Number Also, Dovex Fruit Packing Volunteer Process and Use Agreement, Confluence Parkway South, City Project Number 2201. And then add those?
Yeah.
Got it. And then a motion for the city council to amend the agenda and add the agenda as item A to approve the candidates for interviews for the at-large B council vacancy.
Second.
With a motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Euer to, I got it, for the agenda vouchers of minutes from previous meetings, resolution 2025-01, appointing Jamie Goodman as a member of the Wenatchee Arts Recreation Parks Commission, the final contract voucher for Matt House Street Improvements Project, City Project Number 1916, the final contract voucher, 2024 Sidewalk Panel Repair Project, City Project Number S124-03, Dovex Fruit Packaging Voluntary Possession and Use Agreement, Confluence Parkway South, City Project Number 2201.1. And for a motion for the city council to amend the agenda, to add to the agenda as item A to approve the candidates for interviews for the at-large B council vacancy. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So now we'll go to action, our action items, A.
Your Honor, I will move for city council to interview the following candidates, Catherine Hauser, Joseph Gambini, Juan Valle, Myra Navarro Gomez, and Richard Seal, for the vacant at-large B council position to occur on January 23, 2025, at 5:15 p.m. at Wenatchee City Hall, Wenatchee City Council Chambers.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Harold and second by Councilmember Hornby, for city council to interview Catherine Hauser, Joseph Gambini, Juan Valle, Myra Navarro Gomez, and Richard Seal for the vacant at-large B council position to occur on January 23, 2025, at 5:15 p.m. at the Wenatchee City Hall Council Chambers. Any comments or discussion?
I just want to thank everybody that applied, amazing candidates, hard decisions. It's great to see our community getting involved, so I appreciate that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. You're not Terry.
Mayor Poyer, council members, good evening. I gave Terry O'Keefe, our water collections manager, the night off. He put in several hours in the last couple of days, so I'm here to present this action item on his behalf. This action item is associated with the city's 8 million gallon Jefferson Reservoir Improvements Project. The scope of this project basically essentially includes lining, relining the Jefferson water, excuse me, water reservoir with a new geomembrane. This is due to excessive leakage the reservoir currently is experiencing. For example, right now, the reservoir leaks approximately 62 million gallons per year. So that's excessive. So this elevated the project urgency, so we had Grayne Osborne Consulting put together a design package, and subsequently, we put this project out to bid in November. We received three bids, and the lowest responsive bid was submitted by SCI Industrial Services LLC. And so the action item, again, this evening, is to award the contract to SCI LLC in the amount of $699,584. We did, the lowest bid was not initially submitted by SCI LLC, excuse me, SCI Industrial LLC, and that's because the lowest bid did not meet minimum qualifications. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
No questions, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I will move for city council to award the construction contract for the 8 million gallon Jefferson Reservoir Improvement, City Project Number 2306, to the lowest responsible bidder, SCI Industrial Services LLC, and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract documents.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Harold and second by Councilmember Euer, for city council to award the construction contract for the 8 million gallon Jefferson Reservoir Improvement, City Project 2306, to the lowest responsible bidder, SCI Industrial Services LLC, and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract documents. I guess it's a, I don't know if it's a comment, this is going to help our leaking water, right?
Correct, it'll reduce our distribution system.
And this is what we've been looking at for quite a while.
Correct, yeah. And I will note, we are, in terms of the schedule, we want to expedite this as quickly as possible, so we want to get this repaired before peak demand. So our target completion date is in April.
April, great.
I appreciate the photos, that's great. Thousand words to a photo, never seen inside of one of those, so I was pretty excited, too.
Yeah, pretty interesting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Harmon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Ryan Harmon, Engineering Services Manager. I'm here before you tonight to talk about our south end bike pit access bridges project and to recommend awarding the project to our lowest responsive bidder, Apollo Inc. Obviously, we've been working on this project for quite a while. We put this project out to ad on October 29th, it was out to ad for about six weeks. We received six bidders, we got an expert, a bid opener. Thank you, Councilmember Hornby, for your assistance in that bid opening process. Like I mentioned, we got six bids. The lowest bidder was Apollo Inc. with a bid amount of $13,260,502.10. This is roughly 11% over our engineer's estimate for the project. Fortunately, we do have access to Move Ahead Washington Monies, which was intended to be an infra-match for our, all of our infra-funded projects, and that's what we're planning on utilizing to capture any of the overage there. Couple quick, just speaking to timeline for the project, so if awarded tonight, we'll move forward to executing the contract as soon as we can in the next couple of weeks. Within 20 days of that, we'll anticipate seeing that first construction schedule, which is going to inform us a lot about what our impacts are going to be looking like for Hale Park and the loop trail users, both on the east Wenatchee side with the bridge going across the highway over there, and then access because the existing ramp will be coming down. So more to come in the next month or so on that, which will be really pushing out a broad public involvement to mitigate any of those concerns and reducing that impact as much as possible. With that, I'd open up to any questions.
And this did go to the Finance Committee?
That's correct, yes. One other note, the motion does state pending Wash Dot concurrence, we did receive Wash Dot concurrence on this as well.
Pretty exciting project, connecting the south of Wenatchee and also across the highway in east Wenatchee, public safety. I almost got hit on the east Wenatchee side a few years back, so, yeah, this is great. With that being said, I'll make a motion for the city council to amend the project budget and pending Wash Dot concurrence, award the contract for construction of the south end bike pit access bridge project, City Project Number 2201.2, to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, and further authorize the city administrator to sign the construction contract documents.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Atkinson, for the city council to amend the project budget and pending Wash Dot concurrence, award the contract for construction of the south end bike pedestrian access bridges, Project, City Project Number 2201.2, to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, and further authorize city administrator to sign the construction contract documents. Any comments or discussion?
Just very excited to see this project come to life, so thank you for all your hard work on it. It's exciting for the community.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Jake Loring, city engineer, bringing to you an item tonight, seeking authorization for the city administrator to sign an amendment to the existing contract with our design builder on Confluence Parkway Phase 1. So this is, we've kind of been here a few times talking through the progressive design-build process and those milestones, and so this is kind of the final, the final piece here that we're bringing forward to tonight, that sets the guaranteed max price to complete the project, so kind of finish the design and build it. So excited to bring this to you tonight. The total amount of this amendment is, I won't read the whole number, but it's 79.6 million listed there in the packet. That brings the total contract value up to a little over $88 million. We would anticipate starting construction this spring and then completing it in the summer of 2027. And, you know, just take a, take a chance to kind of, I guess, recognize there's been a lot of effort to get to this point. This has been a result of a lot of successful teaming between not only the city and our owner-adviser consultant, but, you know, a great partner that we've been able to bring on with this design builder, and we can, I can bring this number to you confidently saying that, you know, we're getting a really good value, a good partner, especially looking back at some of the things with the complexities of kind of bringing the railroad, the PUD, the other stakeholders, and a lot of complex issues, bringing those all here along with us in a really short amount of time, which had included, you know, better part, a little over a year now, we've been having this huge crew of people kind of come to Wenatchee every other week from Colorado and Seattle and all kind of, all over, spend the week here, teaming together and being in person and working through the problems, so. So, yeah, with that, open up to any questions.
Again, this went to Finance Committee also.
I brought this to Finance Committee as well. And I mentioned it is within the current approved project budget. We actually came in, design builder was able to bring us a price that was under the target budget that we set.
Excellent work. I don't have a, yeah, Linda. I don't have a question, just, thanks for being diligent and staying focused on it and getting through new council and a new mayor and keeping it going, so I appreciate it.
That's a great job. Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to authorize the city administrator to execute the GMP amendment with Kramer Scarcella Brothers joint venture for the Confluence Parkway Phase 1 project, Project Number 2201.1.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osteen and second by Councilmember Euer, for city council to authorize the city administrator to execute the guaranteed maximum price amendment with Kramer Scarcella Brothers joint venture for the Confluence Parkway Phase 1 project, Project Number 2201.1. Yeah, incredible work. Any other comments or discussion?
I feel like we need a round of applause or something.
Yeah, it's, it is.
It's a big moment.
Yeah, it really is.
I didn't want to.
It feels like, it feels like this grasp now for the average person, like, okay, here, we broke it up, the phases, we, now we, now we can see it in play and it's coming together. So it is, that concept's coming, so.
Yeah, I mentioned this to our Finance Committee, I, you know, this, I can't really speak enough for the team we have that we were able to find with our owner-adviser and our design builder. They make me look good, so I've been able to just kind of bring the good news that they've been doing. I didn't want to sway the vote, so I was going to wait till afterwards, but I do want to recognize, we have Nathan Corbin, our design builder PM, you know, and then we have a couple, we have Joe Howard and Jack Swagler here from our owner-adviser team. These guys have been with us the whole way and putting in a lot of hours, and again, you know, Nathan's coming up here every other week from, from the Denver area, and he's got a family there, but he's spent a lot of time with me and others here, making sure we were keeping the project first the whole time, so I'm going to pass all the kudos to these guys behind me, because they, they really brought this thing forward, so.
You're a good leader, Jake. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Senior Engineer Utilities, Mr. Hoover.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here to talk to you tonight about a couple of projects that we have at the wastewater treatment plant. The first one is the blower buildings project. The project was to replace a couple of old turbo blowers that dated from the early 90s. They were very large, high-flow items. We've replaced two out of the three existing ones. One we left in place. We replaced them with, with high-efficiency, variable-speed blowers that are much more energy-efficient. There has been one change order on the project, and that was to revise some of the geometry of the exhaust header and discharge assembly, it was for about $10,000. What I have in front of you tonight is a request to amend the project budget. We're going to be doing a little bit more programming. Everything is in currently, but it's not balanced, per se, and as part of the commissioning, we need to have RH2 engineering continue doing some work for the next couple of months to get everything interfaced and all the programming working with our current SCADA system. So the amendment to the project budget is basically just extending the duration of the project a couple more months. With that, do you have any questions that I can answer about that one?
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the city council to approve an amendment to the project budget for the wastewater treatment plant blower building improvements, Project Number 2106.
Oh.
Second.
Was that the, we're on one, sorry.
No, that's right. Plant blower.
We did the plant blower building, but it is the one at the bottom.
Got it.
I did the right one, didn't I?
Yes, that was the first one.
Second. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Atkinson, second by Councilmember Hornby, for the city council to approve the amendment. Which one?
This one says blower.
But that says, is it E? Is that what you read?
Originally, D, now E.
We did them out of order.
Did I do them out of order? I apologize for that.
That's okay, I bothered you.
Motion for city council to approve the amendment to the project budget for wastewater treatment plant blower building improvements, Project Number 2106. Any comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I guess that was item F, I guess go back to item E here, apologize for that, that was my fault. This is the other project that we have going on at the plant right now, which is the digester four project. It's been going on for a couple of years right now. The item that you have in front of you is a request for amendment to the budget and for authorization to, for the city administrator to sign the change order number nine to the project. The project was originally 14.4 million, with this change order, we will be approximately 15.6, so we're looking at about 8 to 9% change orders at this point. The request includes change order eight, which was approximately $97,700 that was executed in September. The current change order number nine has several more items associated with it, predominantly the retaining wall and onsite paving and some more piping modifications. The change order is still currently under review by HDR, there's a bunch of force account work that has to be reviewed and authorized, and then we'll execute the final change order. Change order number nine. With that having been said, do I have anything I can answer for you?
You mentioned at the Finance Committee, just the whole notion that this, working on an existing structure, that might be helpful just for folks to hear that, why that increase.
Sure. So the plant's been around since the early 50s, it's undergone several renovations, and so right now, we're looking at the most recent upgrade to an industrial process. We're trying to integrate everything together, and as things progress, more things are identified that have to fix, have to be fixed in order to make everything work. The commissioning of the system has generally gone well, but little things progressively have come to light that have to be addressed as part of the commissioning process. It's analogous to doing a repair on a car where you find one thing wrong, and then you fix it, and you're working on another thing, and then you see something else wrong, and it's just a progressive, a progression of repairs that end up having to happen.
Thank you. Do you see a light at the end of this tunnel?
I do, I do see a light at the end of this tunnel. It, in large part, depends on how long it takes to get equipment. That's been our Achilles' heel the whole time with this project is lead times. And depending on the Um, and depending on the decision that we make and how we choose to address, um, the air buildup that we're having in one of the digested sludge systems, that could be as much as twenty to twenty-four weeks of lead time to get a couple of, of the valves necessary to fix the situation. So that's the end of the tunnel that I see, and I do see a light, I'm expecting that there will be a few more changes, but hopefully not many.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to authorize the city administrator to sign the construction change order and authorize an amendment to the, uh, project budget.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Uwer, for City Council to authorize the city administrator to sign the construction change order and authorize amendment to the project budget. Any other comments or discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Quick session, um, you guys are students in the back there, do you have to get stuff signed? Perfect, so before anybody signs it here, you'll have to ask a question, uh, and so, just so you guys know, think of a question you're going to ask after the meeting about something about, anything, whatever you want, about the city, something like that, if you want it signed, if you don't want it signed, uh, then don't ask a question. Uh, what class is it?
A P compared to governance.
Okay, at, at the high school or college, high school level, all right, thanks. Who's your teacher? Oh, Scott, okay, perfect, all right, we'll give him, we'll give him a call later. Thank you guys for coming. Mayor's report, um, just a reminder, next week, we have a work session for the Planning Commission to kick off the Conference of Plan Process, January eighteenth, and we'll send you out an invite here regarding the uplift awards, it'd be nice if you guys could, uh, a couple, a couple of city councils could come to that, it's at eleven o'clock. And then, uh, somebody's been texting me because I asked them to and emailing me throughout the last couple of days, so I'm going to ask our Public Works Director why, what has been going on and why he's been doing that with me and the city administrator, even though we asked, we had to make sure we're in loop. Usually it's only the chief that does that at two A M., but it was kind of an important week, uh, an incredible, uh, story, if you wouldn't mind sharing that with us.
For sure, thank you, Mayor Poyer. Council members, once again, good evening, Tom Wacholder, Public Works Director. The intent here, I just want to give you a really high overview of the recent sewer force main break we experienced on Old Station Road that occurred on Tuesday. Initially, this came in as a sinkhole report late Monday afternoon, the crew investigated the next day and speculated that it was a force, or force main that was leaking that caused it, so they did a, a, just a shutdown to rule out the, the cause of which, and then when they did that controlled shutdown, the pipe really ruptured, and so Mayor Poyer declared an emergency on Tuesday at ten thirty in the morning and gave us authorization to pursue an emergency contract with Hurst Construction, and they were able to mobilize and start digging five o'clock on Tuesday evening, and approximately thirty-nine hours later, we were able to patch up the repair. Um, one thing to note, this force main is twenty feet deep, so the excavation was quite extensive and required very complex shoring systems, and, uh, so it took some time. So, and our crew also worked thirty-six hours non-stop, we had split crews, and so what had to happen was we had to shuttle wastewater out of the lift station to our gravity system to avoid overflow, which ultimately would have discharged into the Columbia River and caused property damage. Um, so again, yeah, thirty-six hours continuously hauling wastewater with three vector trucks, and the Douglas County Sewer District provided mutual aid as well, they provided a vacuum truck and an operator through the thirty-six hours as well. Uh, one thing I want to note is I really want to appreciate the community stepping up and reducing their sewer flows in the old station area, there's a lot of commercial, there's a lot of commercial, uh, development there, in particular Stamilt, they are packing quite heavily right now, so normally they would have high sewer discharges, but they were willing to adjust their production to reduce sewer discharges while we were, while the crews repaired the sewer line, which was instrumental in making this happen. So, long story short, it was, uh, it was kind of hectic for thirty-six hours, but the repair has been complete on the sewer, sewer force main, however, the roadway restoration is still pending. In terms of value of the repair, the cost of the repair is estimated to be anywhere from two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand at this point, that again is just for the force main repair, there's still restoration efforts forthcoming on that. Um, and this comes out of the Sewer Utility Fund, which we fortunately have ample reserves to cover situations like this. Uh, we may have to adjust some planned projects in the future, but nonetheless, we have some sewer fund cash on hand to, to take care of this. And again, the roadway's anticipated to be closed till about next week. Big shout out to Jessica Shaw and her utilities team, they really stepped up and made things happen, I mean, Brad and his finance team, they helped with, uh, issuing notices, Laura, thank you for the support and mayor's support as well, Laura helped us reviewing, uh, press releases and getting them really concise and, and, and clear for the community, so a big team effort, and yeah, appreciate everything, so.
Yeah, get some sleep tonight.
Yeah.
And don't text me.
Try not.
Other, I know it's been a little while, you guys gone back to a few committees, got some updates, where you at? Linda, you want to start with you?
Um, sure, uh, we had our first meeting of the year for the Masawa Sister City Association on last Thursday, and, uh, we are meeting the first Thursdays of the month, every month. We're getting ready for Apple Blossom because we have delegates coming. Um, also, the dates have been set for our, uh, association to travel to Japan, it'll be September twenty-sixth, uh, leaving on, that's a Friday, and returning on Sunday, October fifth. I know that Travis and Top have been very interested for those dates, so I'm glad to give you those. Um, work is going, we're going to be at the multicultural event on, what is the date?
The eighteenth.
The nineteenth, thank you. The eighteenth, thank you. Um, so we'll be there, we'll have a booth, we're, we wanted to do that because we want, we're trying, we're looking for membership, and we want to celebrate everything we have to offer. Um, the Columbia River Homeless Housing Task Force will not meet again until March, um, they're working on some fundraising, some things for contracts that are coming up as well as putting some metrics in place, so.
Good.
That's all I have.
Good start of the year.
Um, by the way, my husband really wants to go on that trip, so I'm going to have to get those dates from you.
Who does?
My husband.
Oh, good.
He wants to go to Masawa, so you guys might have another.
He will enjoy it, he will love it.
Um, let's see, most of my new committees all start next week, so things will get pretty busy here pretty quick, but holidays were great, feels good to be back in action. Um, curious about the, um, the upcoming pick count, if there's any information about that, or if, does the city.
The county just put out.
The point time count, yeah.
Yeah, the county just put something out, yeah.
So, that'll be interesting.
Yep.
We can have Glenn share some information on that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thing on, on hand right now.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Nothing yet?
Yet.
Okay, same, same, all starting up.
Yep.
Uh, W D A had their annual retreat, talking about the plans for the year, make sure we're on board, new board member orientation as well, so that, that went, they have a exciting year planned.
And the County Homeless Strategic Task Force working on the update to their five-year plan has continued to meet, Glenn DeVries is also on that, uh, strategic planning team. And I feel like the, the last meeting, we were able to bring the city's perspective to bear on a particular item, so, uh, that was good and helpful, I think, and, and the commitment is really to try to get alignment between the city and the county, so it's good that Glenn was there, too. And I will be out of town, um, from tomorrow till before our next council meeting, if I can, is the, that planning meeting or that workshop going to be available on? Will it be on, uh? Oh, so it won't be on YouTube either? Oh, okay, so I could watch it? I don't, okay.
You can watch and learn just from a dis, a distance.
I could text Travis with my questions. Okay.
All right, well, great. All right, well, Happy New Year, everybody, let's see, we need, what, a motion, uh, what's this called, what motion is? Adjournment, that's right.
Yeah, I'll move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
We like, uh, motion by Councilmember Osteen and second by Councilmember Uwer to adjourn the meeting. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed?